Okay.
Everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Sunshine notice, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Board of Commissioners, public meeting, Thursday, November 5th, 2020. Time is now 7:13. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice of this meeting was published in November 28, 2019, issues of The Nutley Sun, The Herald News, and The Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of COVID-19 pandemic, the public meeting for the remainder of the 2020 have been changed to Zoom webinar or teleconference meeting until further notice. The public meeting will be able to listen to the Board of Commissioners meeting and participate during the designated public comment portion of the meeting by utilizing access through a URL link or dial-in number provided on the township website. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracco is absent, excused this evening. Commissioner Scarpelli.
Here.
Mayor Tucci.
Here.
Everyone is present, Mayor, except for Commissioner Petracco. He's absent, excused.
Thank you very much. I see we have minutes, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, we have executive session minutes for September 1st, 2020, and October 6th, 2020.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And that's it for minutes.
Thank you very much. I see we have no communications or correspondence, but under discussion, we have 2020 best practices inventory. Commissioner Evans, would you like to address that?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, every year, we have to report to the Division of Local Governmental Services and respond to a best practices inventory of the operations of the township. It's the questions change every year, and I'm very pleased to share that we did very well on our responses to this questionnaire. As such, there we will not be in jeopardy as it relates to our state aid, and this is just one of the administrative steps that we have to go through. Towns that can't respond well to this have the ability to get their aid cut as much as 50%. So for us, it's very important that we do well on it. I'm very pleased that we did. We did well, and we'll report accordingly. If anybody has any further comment, I'm open to sharing any thoughts, but good, go.
Commissioners, any comments? Any questions? I see, Commissioner. Thank you. Reports, I have a Shatree report for the month of October, 2020. That's it. Madam Clerk, bills, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill is for November 5th, 2020. By department totals, Public Affairs, $85,188.09. Revenue and Finance, $7,807,706.64. Public Safety, $55,973.10. Public Works, $80,840.47. Parks and Public Property, $625,596.64. Water Utility, $138,258.82. Payroll for October 16th, regular payroll total, $793,733.35. Overtime payroll total, $33,086.81. COVID overtime payroll total, $5,473.38. Total payroll for October 16th, 2020 is $832,293.54. Payroll for October 30th, 2020, regular payroll total, $794,588.42. Overtime payroll total, $58,793.99. Total payroll for October 30th, 2020, $853,382.41. For a grand total of $10,479,266.71.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Thank you so much. I will now entertain public comment on agenda items only.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should state their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Is there anyone? There's no one, Mayor.
No one? Okay. Moving right along, Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two things. One is, I just want to acknowledge the clerk and our deputy clerk for their actions related to the election. The preparation around that was very dynamic with the county. They started their day at 4:00 in the morning, and they ended their day after 10:00 p.m. in the evening, and that's a long day to be handling and adjusting the election. And from the standpoint of all of the communications, the supporting messages, the reassurance, I just think it's just important that we acknowledge their efforts. And so I wanted to share that. So, you're welcome.
Thank you.
The other is, and Mayor, I think I might raise this, but I think maybe as the Mayor, you might add to it.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry, yeah, yeah.
We're having a hard time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't hear so good, and that muffles the sound, so it's a bad combination.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And my memory shot, so what did I say? So, I just want to make a comment about COVID right now, but I wanted to say, as the Mayor, I'm sure you would too, so just my comments aren't exclusive. I just really, I think the month of October, we learned a lot about the presence of the virus, and I just wanted to encourage people to follow the guidance that's been delivered in terms of keeping themselves safe and practicing good social distancing and following the rules, wearing a mask and so on. We have been very supportive of the businesses and helping them stay, do what they need to do to stay open. We are counseling them all the time on understanding, though, that COVID is present, and they should continue to follow those guidelines as well, which I know creates some challenges for them, and we appreciate that. But the virus is here, and we're going into the fall, the colder weather, which will create some challenges. So I just wanted to make a comment related to that, so thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Evans stole some of my thunder, but I just wanted to urge everyone to be vigilant and remember to practice being safe, especially as we see this uptick in the pandemic. Just make sure you keep you and your family safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli.
No comments right now, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, we will move into ordinance introductions. Commissioner Kelly? Oh, we already had public comment. Yes.
We did, I'm sorry.
We did. There was no one. That's okay. Part of the COVID brain there, Counselor. I understand. Commissioner, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance for, part to amend the salary ordinance. This was something that was done before my election, and it was brought to my attention that this was tabled, so I'm just reintroducing it. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading advertised in The Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final date, for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 1st, 2020.
Commissioner, would you like to read the title, please?
Oh, "In ordinance to amend the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey effective March 1st, 2020." So moved.
So moved. I got a second?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Scarpelli, would you please handle Commissioner Petracco's ordinance introductions?
I will, Mayor. This is ordinance number 3462, ordinance to amend ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 228, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29 IA, entitled Handicap Parking. They had the location set forth there written. I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading, advertised in The Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 1st, 2020. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3463, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley, Chapter 673, entitled Vehicles Empowerment and Towing, particularly Article K, entitled Towing and Storage Fees Scheduled to Re- Revised Towing and Storage Fees. I move this ordinance be passed to a second reading advertised in The Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 1st, 2020. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3464, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of Township of Nutley Code, Chapter 60, entitled First Aid Squad Be Enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that Chapter 60, entitled First Aid Squad, be hereby amended in its entirety to read as follows. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading advertised in The Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on December 1st, 2020. Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Abstain.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We have several ordinances this evening on second reading, first one being bond ordinance number 3455. I would like to open up the hearing, please. Does anyone wish to be heard? Is there someone that wants to be heard? Yes, okay.
Yes. Oh, okay.
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. It's a wicked reverb. It's very hard to hear. I'd like to try getting on your section A. What buildings are we going to be doing?
Would you like to answer that?
Yes, and then you follow up.
I can answer it also.
Rory, each year, we do a bond ordinance that includes bonding improvements that need to be addressed not only for buildings, but for the various departments, including the parks, the physical property of the township. Each Commissioner goes through and identifies what they need to spend money on. So I would yield on the detail to Commissioner Mayor Tucci to address his improvements on buildings if you're looking for some more specific information.
Rory, typically, this is the account where we make improvements, the major heating, ventilation, air conditioning systems, plumbing systems, renovations of bathrooms and other facilities throughout the township. As of late, due to the COVID pandemic, we protected our employees with Plexiglas and other things. So depending on what pops up and what we have, what we experience during the course of the year, this is the account that we take out of.
I thought the COVID was going to be bonded out of a different account.
The COVID, up until, I guess it was last week, has been severely restricted as to what you can charge to it. All right? So they would all have to be COVID-related, but something such as a renovation of a bathroom is not COVID-related. A heating improvement is not COVID-related. A roof replacement is not COVID-related. So there are many things that are not COVID-related that we would not be able to charge off to that, so we would need another option, and this is that option.
So you're just borrowing the $350,000 just to do reservations. It's a fund, basically?
Well, we borrow this money and only spend what we absolutely need. So if we don't need to spend the entire $350,000, we don't. Commissioner, would you like to comment?
Yes, Rory, and we cannot simply go out and use this money and say, oh, let me spend $350,000. Give me $350,000, and I'm not going to, and I'll figure out what I want to do with it later. Anytime that we go in, once we set up the bond fund, in order for us to actually use the money, it does require the following public contract law and preparing specs and information associated with each project that is followed. While we set this up as a bond, I actually don't actually go out and get bonds every year. I generally go into the bond market once every about five years. In the interim, I'll use short-term funding, one-year notes, because they're very, very, very cheap right now, to do that, to make sure that the cash is available for us. It has actually worked very well for us, because what we did is we put in a capital management plan, which allows us to make sure that our debt service stays stable in each operating budget, and over time, we've actually reduced our outstanding debt by $2.5 million. Yet, we've been able to improve the buildings. We've been able to buy and purchase equipment and meet the needs of the municipality. So it's actually a very efficient and effective way to manage capital improvements.
So are you going to do general note funding for this, not bonds? Is that correct?
Yes, I have the ability to do a one-year note, yes.
But this is listed as a bond?
I have the ability in this document to do that.
Now, the other ones that are listed below, are they going to fall into the same category of a note rather than a bond?
Yeah, this, if I have the, first off, if I have the money to do it, I won't bond it at all. But if I do have the, this just gives me the authorization that if I need to bond it, I will. And each of the items in here would fall under that criteria and that evaluation, which we work very closely with the CFO and our outside order.
Okay, thank you.
As well as bond counsel. I'm sorry, did you, Mary, Rory, did you say something?
I said, "Thank you."
All right, all right. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Bond ordinance 3457. We will open the public hearing. No one wishing to comment?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have bond ordinance 3458. This is a bond ordinance providing for improvements at DeMuro Park in the amount of $731,160, and it's a portion of that $500,000 and change as a grant, and the $182,790 will be a low, I'm sorry, a no interest loan. I'll open the public hearing. Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Next ordinance, 3459, is being tabled this evening. This is Commissioner Petracco's ordinance. So we will move into resolutions. Commissioner Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. This first one I have is to designate National Pancreatic Awareness Month. Whereas although researchers are unsure as to what exactly causes pancreatic cancer, known risk factors of the disease have been identified, like smoking, diabetes, age, and gender. Whereas pancreatic cancer amounts for about 3% of all cancers in the U.S., about 7% of cancer deaths. The average lifetime risk of pancreatic cancer for both men and women is about 1 in 65, 1.15%, but each person's chances of getting this cancer can be affected by certain risk factors. Whereas about 57,600 people, 3,400 men, and 27,200 women will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. And about 47,050 people, 24,640 men, and 22,410 women will die of pancreatic cancer. Pancreatic cancer is one of the few cancers for which survival has not been improved substantially for more than 40 years. Whereas the percent of pancreatic cancer deaths is the highest among people aged 65 to 74. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey declare November as National Pancreatic Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that we urge all residents to take the time to learn about this devastating cancer in hopes to raise awareness, as most people are not as knowledgeable about pancreatic cancer as breast cancer or prostate cancer. But it is just a debilitating disease. So moved.
Get a second, please.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This next one is a resolution designating Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month, which is another important disease that we need to be, learn about and address. Whereas Alzheimer's disease is a progressive degenerative disease of the brain, causing deterioration in memory and thinking, as well as judgment and reasoning ability. It also affects behavior, emotions, and the ability to perform self-care. And whereas according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in the U.S. adults and kills more than breast cancer and prostate cancer combined. According to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, approximately 5.8 million people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's. And whereas 1 in 10 people aged 65 and older 10% has Alzheimer's dementia. Whereas $244 billion of care is provided by family members and other unpaid caregivers, and about 1 in 3 caregivers, 30% is 65 or older. Whereas by 2050, the number of people aged 65 and older with Alzheimer's dementia may grow to projected 13.8 million. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex and the State of New Jersey that the month of November be recognized as Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that we recognize individuals, family, friends, and caregivers dealing with the devastating effects of Alzheimer's disease, that researchers who are seeking a cause and causes to incur, and educational programs and support services by local and national Alzheimer's organizations. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This next resolution is to recognize the 245th anniversary of the Marine Corps' birthday. Whereas on November 10th, 1775, the Second Continental Congress Meeting in Philadelphia passed a resolution stating that two battalions of Marines be raised for service as landing forces with the fleet. And whereas this resolution established the Continental Marines and marked the birth date of the United States Marine Corps. Whereas since 1798, the United States Marine Corps has defended America in every conflict and war, on land, at sea, and in the air. And whereas the adaptability and reliability of the Marine Forces continue to be highlighted around the world in both the fight against terrorism and humanitarian relief. And whereas today, United States Marine Corps stands ready to continue in the proud tradition of those before them who have so valiantly fought and died, combining a long and proud heritage of faithful services to the nation. With resolve to face tomorrow's challenges, we'll continue to keep the Marine Corps the best of the best. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, recognize November 10th, 2020, as the 245th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps. Semper Fidelis, always faithful. Encourage all to join them in celebrating this outstanding milestone and take time to appreciate those brave individuals who serve us every day. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
This is a resolution to recognize another important disease that many people suffer from. Whereas 34.2 million adults, 1 in 10, have diabetes, and 88 million American adults, approximately 1 in 3, have prediabetes. Whereas type 1 diabetes accounts for about 5.2% of all diagnosed cases of diabetes, affecting approximately 1.6 million people. Whereas in 2018, an estimated 1.5 million new cases of diabetes were diagnosed among U.S. adults aged 18 years or older. This includes approximately 210,000 children, adolescents younger than 20, aged 20 years. Whereas the increase in type 2 diabetes among our nation's children is linked to the rise in childhood obesity, and by encouraging our sons and daughters to develop healthy habits today, we help ensure that they have a brighter, healthier tomorrow. Whereas diabetes is the seventh leading cause of death listed on U.S. death certificates and the ninth leading cause of death in women globally. Whereas between 2% and 10% of pregnancies in the United States are affected by gestational diabetes every year. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, declare November as National Diabetes Awareness Month, and recognize November 14th as World Diabetes Day. Be it further resolved that we urge all residents to educate themselves on diabetes and how complications can be prevented or delayed by properly managing blood glucose, blood pressure, and cholesterol level, by eating healthy, being physically active, and to quit smoking. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
And this last resolution I have, I think it might be the first time that Nutley is recognizing Native American Heritage Month. So I'm proud to move this ordinance. Let me read it first. Oh, sorry, resolution. Whereas November 1st, 2020, through November 30th, 2020, the United States celebrates National Native American Heritage Month. Whereas National Native American Heritage Month is an opportunity to consider and recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history of the United States. Whereas Native Americans maintain vibrant cultures and traditions and hold a deeply rooted sense of community. Whereas Native Americans have moving stories of tragedy, triumph, and perseverance that need to be shared with future generations. Whereas Native Americans have made distinct and important contributions to the United States and the rest of the world in many fields, including the fields of agriculture, medicine, music, language, and art. Whereas Native Americans have distinguished themselves as inventors, entrepreneurs, spiritual leaders, and scholars. Whereas the people of the United States have reason to honor the great achievements and the contributions of Native Americans and their ancestors. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, ask me to join them in recognizing and celebrating November as National Native American Heritage Month. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans, anything this evening?
Happy to be here.
Thank you. Commissioner Petracco has nothing. Commissioner Scarpelli?
Nothing to say, being there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the following newspapers are hereby designated as the official newspapers for advertising for the Township of Nutley for the year 2021. The Nutley Sun, One Garrett Mountain Plaza, P.O., Box 471, Woodland Park, New Jersey; The Star Ledger, One Star Ledger Plaza, North New Jersey; The Herald News, One Garrett Mountain Plaza, Woodland Park, New Jersey. And be it further resolved that Tapperton Nutley B, and hereby is designated as the electronic news source for which notices and other matters are to be provided under the Open Public Meetings Act of the State of New Jersey, otherwise known as the Sunshine Month. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco. I'm sorry, Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Please take notice that in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, Chapter 231, P.L., 1975, the public meetings of the Shatree Committee for 2021 will be held on the following dates. All meetings are held at 44 Park Avenue, Room Number 201, Nutley, New Jersey, January 12th, March 9th, April 6th, June 8th, September 21st, and November 16th, 2021. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Aye.
Mayor Tucci.
Aye.
Be it resolved in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, the public meetings of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, are held the first and third Tuesday of every month. Please take notice the public meetings for the year 2021 will be held on the following dates at the Township of Nutley Municipal Building, Third Floor, Commissioned Chambers, One Kennedy Drive, at 7:00 p.m., at which time formal action may be taken. Please take notice that the regularly scheduled meetings of the Board of Commissioners will take place via Zoom webinar for 2021. Please take notice the governing body of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey may require an executive session at any given meeting listed below. In accordance with NJSA 10:4-12, the governing body will adopt the resolution at an open meeting indicating the reasons for going into an executive session. No action will be taken in the executive session. Please take further notice the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley may hold an end-of-the-year meeting on Thursday, December 30, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. Township of Nutley Municipal Building, Third Floor, Commissioned Chambers, One Kennedy Drive, where formal action may be taken on the dates listed on this resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the following days shall be considered paid holidays. This is the 2021 holiday schedule as listed on the resolution. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire specialized professional services for air conditioning, plumbing, heating, refrigeration service, and purchase. And whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for sealed bids for air conditioning, plumbing, heating, and refrigeration service and purchase. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the sealed bids be due by Tuesday, November 24, at 11:00 a.m. Addressed Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly opened and read via Zoom. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Whereas the resolution was adopted on February 4, 2020, awarding a contract to Dojet's Tree Experts, 54 Notch Road, Woodland Park, New Jersey. And whereas the agreement entered on the bid specification between Dojet's Tree Service and the Township of Nutley on January 1, 2021, through December 31, 21, with the option to be extended for a one-year term but not to exceed two years. Whereas funds are available from Account 1-01512205, pending adoption of the 2021 municipal budget, not to exceed $40,000 for the year, and have been certified or will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution at the appropriate time. Now therefore be it resolved that the Township of Nutley renewed the contract with Dojet's Tree Experts, 54 Notch Road, Woodland Park, for tree removal service pursuant to the previously signed agreement. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5. And whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has determined that there is a need to acquire specialized professional services for electrical services. And whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and she is directed to advertise for sealed bid for electrical services. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the sealed bids shall be due on Tuesday, November 24, 2020, at 11:00 a.m. Addressed Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly opened and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, the Township Clerk B, and she is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for recreation uniforms and equipment. Bids to be received by Tuesday, November 24, at 11:00 a.m. Addressed Municipal Clerk, Nutley Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly opened and read via Zoom. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized and professional ACA reporting services to ensure compliance with IRS regulations for year 2020 reporting. And whereas such. I'm sorry. Whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. And whereas Prime Point LLC, located to Springside Road, Mount Holly, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal dated October 23, 2020, with an anticipated cost of $7,050 to complete these services and ensure compliance on behalf of the Township of Nutley. And whereas funds are available from Budget Account 0-01526200 and have been certified by the Nutley High School Soccer Booster Club, License Number 2820, for an off-premise 50/50 cash rifle raffle on Thursday, December 17, 2020. And whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the aforementioned license is approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue said license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Whereas Thomas Buell is employed by the Township of Nutley Department of Parks and Public Property. And whereas Thomas Buell will have exhausted all of his available sick leave at other time as of November 12, 2020. And whereas 14 employees of Department of Parks and Public Property are desirous of transferring days of their accumulated sick leave for a total of 45 days to Thomas Buell. And whereas the aforementioned employees have provided their consent to said transfers in writing to the Township Clerk. And whereas under the circumstances presented herein in view of Thomas Buell's medical situation and his services in the Department of Parks and Public Property, the Board of Commissioners are desirous of accommodating this request. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the following employees are permitted to transfer days to Thomas Buell. Anthony Visignano, Christopher Bucy, Ronald Condiv, Frank DeMaio, Michael Donadilla, Mary Fenu, Anthony Gagriardo, Nicholas Ghul, Michael Clerk, Kirk, Angelo Jones, Rondo LaRosa, Corey Pillsbury, Lois Plinio, and Teresa Vincent. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Whereas DMR Architect 777 Terrace Avenue, Hasbrook Heights, New Jersey, has been awarded a non-fair and open contract as a professional service as pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate, to provide services to the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley redevelopment investigation of the Chickolini Site. And whereas such services will exceed the contract amount of $21,000, and the following change order is needed. Change order number one, to provide additional architectural services in the amount of $161.35. And whereas funds are available from Account 0-1226205 and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that change order number one, in the amount of $161.35, be it is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey that the Treasurer B, and she is hereby authorized to refund payments for recreation programs in the amounts listed below. 27 Winter Gleeful Wellness, in the amount of $50 for the year 2020. Gerakis Spring Festival, $100 for the year 2020. And K2 Hoops 96 Ain't Rare Place, in the amount of $25. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Scarpelli.
Hi.
Mayor Tucci.
Hi. We will now open the meeting up to the public for public comment.
Mayor, you want to be?
I'm sorry. Please.
All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach, should state their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Hello?
Yes, sir. We can hear you. Go ahead.
It's Chris Colery, 115 Jorg Avenue. I just have one comment regarding recycling pickup. It's been advertised that there was no recycling pickup this last, this week for Election Day. And then the website showing again for this coming Tuesday due to Veterans Day. However, since our commingled recycling is being picked up by a private hauler, our commingled recycling is indeed being picked up. It's cardboard that's not being picked up.
Commissioner Scarpelli, would you like to respond?
Sure, Mr. Colery, that officially there is no recycling on those days. We don't want people to put out recycling. The vendor, bosso, it's their prerogative to come into town and pick up what's out there. That leaves them less to pick up the next week, which will be a double week. So if they come into town, that's up to them. But officially, there is no recycling on Election Day. And it won't be Tuesday. It'll be Wednesday of next week, the 11th, which is Veterans Day.
Okay, got you. Yep, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else? I'd like to entertain a motion to go into a brief executive session. Very brief.